All right. Good evening, everyone. I'll call the Monday 4/20/2020 Board of Commissioners meeting into order. We don't have anyone signed up this evening as we normally do to do our invocation and pledge. Would anyone like to, the Commissioners like to do an invocation for us this evening?
I would be happy.
Commissioner Bama, if you would please.
Heavenly Father, I ask for your wisdom this great evening. Lord, I pray that you would give us wisdom as we look at the issues facing Currattuck County. Lord, that you would give us the eyes to see and the ears to hear what is going on. Or I pray that we would be receptive to the wisdom that you so graciously have bestowed on us. Father, thank you for protecting our community today. You've had very few impact on this community by the virus. Lord, I ask that you would grant us the wisdom to make the decisions that are in the best interest of our county and our constituency. We're blessed this evening with Jesus' name.
I plead to the Father, on the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its hands.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to move to change the agenda. For those of you who have looked at it online, I'm just going to change up the order a little bit. I'd like to move administrative reports from the Alamo Regional Health Services to the first item on our agenda tonight. Public comment will follow the Health Department report. And then discussion of the current declaration and deadlines for travel to the Outer Banks will take place after public comment. And then we'll move into our regular scheduled agenda items beyond that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any a favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none carries unanimously. Thank you. All right. First item up is Mr. Battle Betz with the Alamo Regional Health Services to give us COVID-19. Are you with us, sir?
All right, Battle. Good evening. Thank you all. Good evening. Thank you all for having us. I have a team of folks here with me tonight on our end. I've got Sandy Farby, our clinical nursing supervisor for the district. I've got Ashley Stup, our instant commander and director of policy, planning, and preparedness. And I also have Amy Underhill, our public information officer and health education program director. So we've got all of us here so we can respond to questions as we proceed with some of our presentation. Just a few notes before we get started, how some other folks give us an update. But, you know, as the governor said earlier or late last week, we are going to be moving from a mitigation phase to more of a containment phase in the weeks to come. We are still seeing us peaking in our area. We've yet to reach what I would consider a peak. I believe we're lagging a little bit behind some of the more metro urban areas that are a little bigger than us. I do think as we continue to go on over the next few weeks, you will, you are seeing more opportunities for some more robust testing. Whereas that's good, you will see, obviously, the more you test, the more positives that's going to generate because as of right now, about 25% of the cases that are out there are really just circulating in the community asymptomatic. So the more that the testing efforts are ramped up, the more positive numbers you are likely to see. That is good in some ways because we will be able to do some enhanced isolation efforts in certain pockets. And, you know, typically, you're going to be hearing about that in the weeks to come, specifically to congregate living facilities like prisons, you know, long-term care facilities and things like that. Specifically important in those long-term care facilities because the elderly being a specifically a vulnerable, a very vulnerable population. So with all of that, with that said, I did want to turn it over to Ashley Stup, who is serving as our instant commander during this pandemic for a current situation update and an update on the cases.
Thank you, Battle. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, everyone can see the screen okay. As you all know, the ARHS vision and mission really is all about creating healthy communities and ensuring our public safety and health through the prevention of morbidity, mortality, and disability. So, you know, obviously, this pandemic situation has launched us full-fledged into a public health response, and we cannot thank you enough for your partnership and your support throughout this. As you all know, we do serve eight counties in the northeastern region, and we do believe that we are privileged to have such amazing partners throughout our entire service area. As far as the coronavirus situation, as you all know, this is a rapidly evolving situation. It feels like we have definitely been working on this for quite some time, and it's really hard to believe when we look back at how quickly this truly has changed. As you all know, there are seven types of coronaviruses that infect humans. Four are very common. They are known more as the common cold, causing mild to moderate illness. And then, of course, we have three that can cause more severe illness, as far as MERS-CoV, SARS-CoV, and now COVID-19. COVID-19 does have a lower mortality rate than SARS and MERS-CoV, but again, we do know that these are very preliminary results. And as we continue to do more testing and identify more cases, we'll learn more and more about this and its true impact. As far as case counts, this is really what I was referring to earlier, as it's hard to believe at how quickly this has changed. When the pandemic itself was declared on March 11th, the global case count at that time was just over 118,000. Here we are just over a month past that time period, and we are already at over 2 million cases globally. There are over 700,000 cases in the United States with 39,000 deaths. In North Carolina, we have increased dramatically with over 6,000. And again, all of these are lab-confirmed cases. We are also monitoring the cases in Virginia. And then we do have 85 cases in the ARHS region. Fortunately, we do have about half that have recovered. Earlier today, we reported two deaths, but unfortunately, this evening, we have issued another press release noting a third death of a Pasquotank County resident. So we do hate to provide that news, but unfortunately, in this situation, this is something that we are going to see. Secretary Cohen also announced today that the case fatality rate as far as what we are seeing in North Carolina with 179 deaths today has bypassed the North Carolina flu deaths for this season. And keep in mind, the flu deaths come over a period of about six months, and we've seen the North Carolina deaths roughly in about a month. So that really is what is most concerning about this. And while we are doing everything that we can in this situation to flatten that curve, we're essentially pushing out the time period for impact. When you think about a flu season, when you think about flu impact, that does happen over a span of six months, and that happens with individuals having some immunity. There's a vaccine. There's a treatment. And so, you know, our healthcare system can handle that response over that six-month-or-so timeframe. But with a novel pandemic, a novel virus, we are seeing things spread much more quickly, and that is ultimately what all of our efforts are trying to do, is to spread out that impact. So that way, we don't cram a six-month-to-a-year response in a month's timeframe and completely overwhelm our resources. As you know, COVID-19 has been declared public health emergency, and we have various executive orders. Again, all of these put in place really to focus on flattening that curve and minimizing that impact. As Mr. Betz mentioned, we have, we initially started in the containment phase. We are now very much in the mitigation phase, but as we move forward and flatten that curve, we're going right back to that containment phase. So you'll see on this next slide, the focus of our future efforts will really be on testing, doing more tests, both the lab tests that will determine who is an active clinical case, but also looking at antibody testing to see who might have immunity to this, who potentially was, has been exposed. The contact tracing with public health will really continue to ramp up. We really see this as a top priority for our agency over the coming weeks and months as we continue to identify the positive cases. Where have those individuals been? Who has been impacted? And I think we'll see a lot more activity on that front, even from a statewide perspective, and how that communication is being shared. And then, of course, trending. You know, data and understanding what is going on is extremely important in this situation, and it will be crucial to understand what is happening. So that way, we know that if we had started to maybe ease up on some of the restrictions, what will be the triggers that we need to possibly tighten those again, just to, again, minimize that spread. Keep in mind, pandemics, we do and have been planning for years, and they do happen in waves. So, you know, even though we are flattening this curve, even though we are talking about loosening and easing some restrictions, it is very likely we will see subsequent waves of activity, and that is not uncommon for this type of event. Symptoms, obviously, are fever and lower respiratory symptoms of cough and shortness of breath. These are the more typical symptoms. However, every case does present differently. The testing guidance, this really is also some breaking news. Just today, the state of North Carolina has issued guidance for our clinicians noting that they can consider testing on any patient. Previously, as you may recall, we were focusing our efforts to, you know, the congregate care facilities, those high-risk, just because we did not have the supplies needed. And really, the labs also could not keep up with the quantities of testing. But over the last few weeks, the state has noticed that the testing capacity is truly expanding within our commercial lab system. And so now, they have felt comfortable with loosening that requirement and allowing clinicians to really test anyone that they feel is a suspect case. So again, keep this in mind, that this will likely increase our case counts moving forward. The state lab still does have various requirements as far as focusing on certain cases. So again, we're primarily focusing these efforts on our commercial lab partners. And a lot of our hospital systems have really stepped up. They have some amazing testing capacity as far as doing more rapid testing, and we're seeing that expand as well. Again, if individuals are sick or their symptoms get worse, or an individual is in high risk, we definitely want them to call their physician first. We want to really still encourage the telehealth component, and that way, individuals in our practices can prepare and make sure that they have the proper staff and personal protective equipment on hand. So that way, we avoid exposing others unnecessarily. Again, individuals at risk for severe illness include those over 60 and those with underlying health conditions. And then, we have been encouraged by CDC to monitor pregnant women. It's not that they're necessarily in that high-risk category, but we don't want to take any chances because traditionally, in virus outbreak settings, you know, they could be at higher risk. So, I know one question that we have gotten a lot is, so an individual is sick, when can they go back to their normal activities? And so, we want an individual, if someone is sick, they can stop isolating themselves when they can answer yes to all three of these questions. So, has it been at least seven days since you first had symptoms? Have you been without fever for three days or 72 hours without using any medicine to reduce that fever? And are your other symptoms improved? If you can answer yes to all three of those, then it is definitely safe for that individual to go back out, obviously still keeping in line with our social distancing guidelines and those types of things. If you're not sure if you've had COVID-19, definitely it is better to isolate yourself. I think that's one lesson learned here, is that we all tend to push ourselves a little too much when we are sick. And I think this is a great reminder of this is exactly why it is so crucial that when you are sick, you should stay home to protect yourself and others. Obviously, the general prevention recommendations. I know that you all think we are a broken record, and we think so too, but it's because it's such an amazing message. We want individuals to wash their hands often with soap and water if soap and water is not available. Alcohol-based hand sanitizer is good. Avoid touching your eyes, nose, and mouth with unwashed hands. Avoid contact with others who are sick. Cover your nose and your mouth with a tissue or your sleeve, not your hands. Masks are now, or cloth face coverings, I should say, are now recommended by CDC. It is important, though, to remember that with those situations, if you're using a cloth face covering, that does not replace these other efforts as far as hand sanitation and those types of things and the social distancing. Really, the asymptomatic spread that Mr. Betz mentioned, that is really where the cloth face covering comes more into play. If you don't realize that you're someone who might have COVID-19 because you have no symptoms or mild symptoms, that is where that cloth face covering really comes into play, and you're protecting others. Then obviously, take care of yourself. We all need to put things in perspective and try to unplug from media, especially social media, from time to time, making sure that the information that we're looking at is factual. We've said this many times, that not only is this a pandemic, but it's also an infodemic. There is a lot of information out there that we need to be careful, making sure that it is factual and coming from credible sources. It's important to communicate with our children. They're hearing this information, and it's a way that we can offset the tone for helping them understand what is going on. Making sure we're staying connected with loved ones in other ways than getting together in large gatherings, but making sure that people are okay. Just being that good neighbor is very, very important. And making sure that you're seeking additional help. There's all sorts of call lines. Our behavioral health clinic is still operational as far as telehealth services. So there's all sorts of resources out in the community. And then, just a reminder, as far as our objectives, we do aim to protect the public's health, protect those that are most vulnerable, minimize the public disruption to the extent possible, and continue to provide crucial public health and governmental services. Again, just want to close out with some sources of credible information. Obviously, we try to keep our ARHS website up to date with the most recent information. You can find all of Ms. Underhill's press releases on the site. We have the CDC site and obviously, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. They have really created a very robust site full of all types of information. We have the ARHS 338 Well Line. That is a great source for individuals. But then, of course, you can also contact any one of our local health departments directly. And that is all we have for you, but we are definitely open to any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I have one, well, at least one. When, a couple of things that you mentioned, Battle, you mentioned containment, entering the containment phase again. Actually, that was mentioned by both. What does that look like?
It really looks a lot like what we encountered at the very, very, very beginning. It's kind of what I would consider to be when we get to that backside of the epi, the epi curve, so to speak. So we've been traveling uphill. I still think we've got a little bit further to go up that hill before we've officially reached that peak. But as soon as we get going down the other side, I think that's when you're going to really see an increased emphasis placed on testing and isolation. We've never stopped doing that in our region, but some areas have stopped doing contact tracing. The state no longer required it, but we never stopped. Our folks, you know, we committed to doing it as long as we could possibly do it, as long as the staff would allow. And thank goodness, our numbers so far are within the realm of our capabilities to continue with contact tracing. So we're still, when we get those positive cases, we're still drilling down and seeing who they've interacted with, who they could have potentially exposed. So we're doing all those things now. But as we continue to get into, back into more of a containment phase, you'll see a little bit more spot-specific testing. And then, again, the goal there is to try to isolate those folks as much as possible. So it shouldn't, it won't change a lot from how we've been responding on our end because we've not wavered from our commitment to do that contact tracing and a detailed level of infection control. But I think the case counts will continue to drive higher as more robust testing becomes available because you're starting to see it now within the Centerra Systems, the Vidant Systems, the state lab, the private labs. That's quite honestly why I believe you saw the guidance change today because I think you can't really promise something that you don't have the internal capacity to deliver, quite frankly. And so I think the testing capacity is finally getting where it can be to, you know, where it should be. The only caveat I would throw out there with the testing, though, would be that, you know, we, any one of us could test negative today, and then we could go back in, you know, Thursday, Friday, end of this week, first of next week, and we would be positive. So it's just, it's important to remember that it's really just a snapshot in time. I think people tend to put a little too much emphasis on the, on the testing because it's truly just a snapshot. And my clinical folks can correct me here, but I mean, it's no different than if you're taking a strep test. If someone is doing a swab of your throat in a strep test, if they don't happen to hit that area that is infected, that test result could very well be negative, quite frankly. So again, just, you know, throwing it all out there. I appreciate the question, though. I hope that, I hope that helped.
Part of it. So I guess, and this goes back to the contact tracing, you know, from apparently results that are occurring nationwide, and I'll use a sampling in Massachusetts, I believe, where of the random people tested, 32% tested positive for the antibodies associated with CV-19. And considering that, if, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, 72 hours, you could be contagious, and the vast majority of people that appear to be non-symptomatic, I'm curious just how successful we expect contact tracing to be as part of containment in that it seems a little, I mean, I agree with you. Testing is great to find out who has it or had it, but managing, managing the numbers, I think, is a challenge, if not near impossible.
Oh, I absolutely agree. I mean, you know, we're, we're in a, we're in a gunfight with a knife, quite frankly, nationwide. I think really, the secret weapon to all of this is going to be that antibody testing, but they just haven't really hit that. You know, it's still too early. I think that what you're hearing about herd immunity and that type of thing, I think that the more, to your, to my earlier point, you can, you can take all the tests you want, you know, these mass testing clinics that were done very early on, quite frankly, were a waste of resources and time and just bogged down the lab because it was people who really didn't need testing at that point in time, and it just bogged the system down. So really, the more valuable tool is going to be if we can test people for antibodies to see what that resistance is. I read an article this morning about New York State, you know, if they, if they can show they have immunity of a certain level, then you could see actually what the prevalence of the virus really was, the true impact, the true mortality rate versus if we have lesser, you know, the implications there are a little bit, a little bit different. So yes, I think testing is only one tool, but with isolation and certainly with our true, you know, tried and true public health methods, isolation, quarantine, and contact tracing are valuable, valuable tools we've used for decades with tuberculosis, hepatitis, HIV, any number of things. But as we continue to roll forward, the golden goose is the vaccine or some type of antibody testing where we can truly see what is actually circulating in the communities.
Well, and based on a significant amount of correspondence that I've received, it seems to me that, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, we, we're spending a lot of resources on trying to figure out who had it, right? And/or, you know, taking care of those that have. And are we proportionally spending time and effort on protecting those that we know are the most susceptible in our society? I, you know, when I look at who's getting it and dying from it, it's kind of a slender, you know, in the, in the general population, that's, that's, it's a very narrow, you know, sector of our society. And it would seem to me, you know, and again, I don't even play a doctor on TV, but if, if we spent, you know, 25% of our resources in protecting the 10% that are susceptible, you know, there's an aspect that I feel like we'd go far further down the road in protecting those that, that, you know, are the most at risk.
Well, that's, that's, I think that's the point of trying to focus now more on with the containment issues for the congregate living facilities. Certainly, those long-term care facilities, those folks that are the most vulnerable, the folks that have a lot of chronic disease. This portion of our state unfortunately ranks very, very high with, you know, diabetes, heart disease, and those types of things. So, you know, we do have a large portion of our populations that are, that are at risk and more vulnerable. So I think there are, the measures that are being taken are trying to focus on those specific populations. The asymptomatic spread is the biggest problem with that because any one of us could be walking around, going to the grocery store or anywhere else and inadvertently then infect someone who is a potential caregiver, someone who's elderly, or someone who's immunocompromised or has some other underlying condition. So it's that asymptomatic spread and that community transmission that eventually finds its way back to those vulnerable pockets in our society. That's where the problem ultimately lies.
Right. And then final, my final question. What tools are you using for modeling? Or are you modeling?
Oh, absolutely, yes. We're, we've got a lot of different models we're looking at. And quite frankly, depending on what day you look at them, they tend to, they tend to change a lot. We're looking at some, obviously, some models through the state, through the CDC, and then there's one through the IHME that's gotten a lot of national publicity. They stopped updating that one as much as I would like, to be honest. I think the last update on that, on that IHME portal was April 17th. So they've gone to only updating that one probably about three days a week, but they have really scaled back some of their initial projections and potential disease and infection curves quite a bit as we've gotten further into the actual days, you know, of living those days. So those, we're definitely watching trends. We're watching our local trends. We've started last week reducing, I mean, releasing information, more detailed information on not just cases. I've been wanting to get beyond this case count mess for quite a few weeks, quite frankly, because what really matters is how many people we have that are active cases. What are we actually dealing with? I think the state counts and the national counts should be really the same way. When you, when you say 6,000 people in North Carolina have been affected with COVID, that's only part of the picture. How many people are currently living with it today? How many people are currently active? So that's what we're trying to do in northeastern North Carolina by looking at, you know, you'll see with our most recent release of what Ashley's numbers were, we've got 43 that are, that are active. Of those 43, I can share that 43, I can share that, you know, approximately 40-something percent are actually tied to congregate living facilities within the, within our prison systems. So that's why I think you're going to start to see a lot more focus on trying to douse those hotspots in the weeks and months ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did he say, you said 40% of the 43 active cases are in the prisons at this time? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, over the weekend, we were working extensively there. The Department of Corrections was doing some prison transfers up through April 5th or 6th, I believe, unfortunately. And so some of our local facilities in our area received inmates from other parts of the state. And specifically, those folks that transferred in have been the ones that are testing positive at this point in time. So they're being, of course, isolated and managed by the prison medical staff. And of course, they're doing their internal contact tracing, and we've identified some other, you know, other cases that we needed to isolate. And they're doing, they're doing a good job of monitoring those at this point. But again, just that, that to me, the prisons and the long-term care facilities, as we move into the next phases, I think those are going to be really, to the earlier point, trying to protect those most vulnerable populations.
Thank you.
Battle, this is Mike Paiman. I don't have a question, but I just want to make a comment again. I did want to give kudos to yourself, Ashley and Amy, for what you do for us in our area, the updates you've provided, the long hours you guys are putting in. I know all the areas. I know Kerrittuck appreciates it. And I just want to say thank you for, you know, for keeping us updated. And I know you guys are working hard to, to do what you can for these folks out here.
I appreciate that a lot. And I thank you for your support and your service on our board. And I apologize for all the emails and phone calls and all of that, but you've been wonderful to work with. And I, we would not survive this without the support from you all. So thank you for, thank you for that. We really appreciate it.
Yes. Battle, this is Owen Etheridge. I read a report today in the Charlotte Observer that there's a University of Washington model that says North Carolina has passed the peak in terms of deaths from COVID-19. Do you agree with that, or is that something that's an outlier?
I've been watching those reports. Good to hear your voice, Mr. Etheridge. I have been keeping up with those as well. I keep waiting to see North Carolina's numbers actually reflect that. And I'm hopeful with what I'm reading in Mecklenburg, what I'm seeing in Mecklenburg and Wake Counties and that kind of thing. And I still think we're lagging a little bit behind. I think we're getting close. One thing I've been doing, too, is when I look at the DHHS website, of course, we look at our own county numbers, but I've also been looking at Davidson County, Iredale County, Pitt County, because, you know, like population sizes, like communities. I've been trying to run some trend analysis on looking at those similar types of counties to what our demographics and all are. So I think we're getting close. I just, I don't want to, I don't want to say we're there yet and have some type of surprise. And I do think we may see multiple peaks and valleys. I just hope the peaks continue to go lower and the valleys will continue to go lower. So I think we're getting close, but I think we've still got a ways to go. And I think with the, you know, the reopening approach and all that we're all hearing about, I definitely like the analogy that someone has, you know, instead of a light switch, it perhaps needs to be a dimmer. I think an eased, we all want to get back to normalcy. Absolutely want to get back to normalcy. It's just going to be trying to seek the safest path to get there.
One last question. In your eight-county area, there's four hospitals. Is that correct?
That's right. That's right.
What's the bed availability right now in terms of patients with this virus versus what's available?
Excellent question. We do a, just as a side note, we do a, we're doing a weekly call. Now we're doing a bi-weekly call with all the providers, and we've got all the local hospitals. So we actually have a powwow where we discuss all of that. And right now, again, knock on wood, I don't want to, I don't want to put the word on anybody's situation, but right now, the last report looks very, very good with sentences and availability of beds in all of our regional facilities. Their census counts are about where they have been traditionally, if not down a little bit when you go year-to-date. Because I like to look at that, too. Like for this week in 2019, what was it compared to this week in 2020? And obviously, you know, the seasonal changes in weather and that kind of thing are certainly at play. But right now, they're really in good shape, and they're not much, most of them are flat or actually lower with their census counts. So they've got good availability. And most of them have actually ramped up to maximize space that they did have. Like Centerra, for instance, you know, way back in the day, they had close to 200 beds. And I think, you know, as, as time has marched on, they have gotten down to about 151, and they had closed a floor and some other, some other areas. And they have really done a good job of going in and opening up some more of those areas that could be potential spots of need. So they're even above and beyond in that realm. And I know the Vidant units have done that as well.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you, guys, for your support. We certainly appreciate it.
Battle, this is Bob White. I just have one question. I've seen something floating around about a study out of Germany, looking at how long this virus stays on surfaces. And I'm just wondering if you guys have seen anything on that, if any information's come across on how long it's able to live on a surface at this point in time? Is any good?
It can be a day or two on some surfaces. You know, we've had some issues in some of our partner schools with the meal programs. And it really, quite frankly, the timing just worked out really, really well for them because they closed out, closed over the weekend and then had someone come in with a deep cleaning on Monday morning, and then they started the meal program back up on Tuesday. So depending on the surface, there are lots of different studies. I've read a study that some of the droplets can travel as far as 27 feet in certain controlled conditions. So the six-foot thing that you hear about, you know, six foot would be the minimum, six feet would be the minimum. But I think, you know, obviously, the more distancing we can encourage, the better. I think it also depends on the type of surface because, you know, we've all read things about cardboard and, you know, porous, porous-type surfaces and that type of thing and clothing. So I think there's still a lot of study to be done. There are conflicting reports on the viability of the virus in extreme cold and extreme heat. We're all very, very hopeful that our warmer days that lie ahead will help stifle this thing, too, as we continue to go forward. But there's not concrete evidence that that's the case, but we certainly do remain hopeful that that will, that will, that will help like it does with the flu and some other traditional, more traditional coronaviruses.
Thank you. Anything further from the board?
Well, I think that'll do for us this evening. Thank you very much for taking time out of your very busy day and filling us in this evening. We certainly appreciate it, everything that you guys are doing over there for us.
Anytime. Anytime at all. Just say the word, and we'll be right back here. So you guys stay safe and take care.
Thank you. You as well. All right. Next item up this evening is public comment. Typically, we have people come in and do public comments. Obviously, with the conditions that are before us today, we cannot do that. We've asked people to email us, and we were initially going to read in the emails for public comment. However, we'll be here for hours doing that based on the number of them. So we've kind of put together a list of the questions that people have asked or comments that were made and assigned them that were common. So I'm just going to go through that. Your comments will be submitted into the record for posterity. So those of you that have submitted emails to us, those will become part of our permanent record. And they have all been submitted to the entire board so that we will see all of your comments. So be rest assured that we have received them. And although we haven't had time to go through all of them at this time, I'm sure that all of us will take the time to do that. I know I'll read anywhere from 30 to 50 a day and respond to, seems like a lot of them. So right now, item A, positive comments for thanking the board for restricting access. We had a whopping two people for that one. I guess everybody's happy they didn't comment on that one. We have a letter from the Northern Kerrittuck Outer Banks Association that was signed by 68 members. They were supportive of our access restrictions. They were concerned about reopening the Outer Banks would bring a higher risk of exposure and request the following: Start an access summit to limit the number of day trippers; provide PPE to resident workers; come up with clear guidelines for social distancing and enforce; always you have to go after the horse tours, suspend the horse tours; if you don't do that, sanitize public parks and restrooms on a regular basis throughout the day; and sanitize boat docks regularly each day. I'm not going to comment on any of these things. These are just being read in so that everyone knows that you've been heard. Request for Kerrittuck business owners regarding access. One, business owner and resident in Corolla doesn't feel safe bringing in the non-resident property owners right now. Request that we county wait until at least May 15th. There was only one person that provided that. Item two is a business owner in Kerrittuck requests that we work with Dare County to reopen as soon as possible. We've been working with Dare County all along through this for the last six weeks. Item D, suggestions. Number one, non-resident property owners should be allowed access. If they quarantine, use face masks, bring their own supplies. Four people commented on that. One said we should keep the beaches closed. Use a pass system for non-resident property owners, similar to beach parking permits. One person submitted that. Institute a six-day rental week so the seventh day is used for cleaning of all houses. One person submitted that. Require face masks and quarantine visitors. We had one submit that. Close beaches, except for fishing and exercise. One person submitted that. Implement a clear calendar system for owner access by designated area and subdivision. One person suggested that. Suggestions for retail stores, safe practices. Those guidelines were set by others, and I've seen them doing that. Include restricted access to campgrounds. Item E, request for non-resident property owners. 11 people would like them to promise to isolate, social distance, and bring their own supplies. Say they will go to facilities other than OBX Hospital if they get sick. Five people would like to see them go somewhere else other than the Outer Banks Hospital. Item F, complaints and concerns. Most of these are from our non-resident property owners. We want to want access to their home, make repairs, and get ready for the season. We received 15 of those comments. Our restriction is illegal, unconstitutional, and have threatened us with lawsuits. 15 have responded in that manner. Board has created a hostile rift between locals and non-resident property owners. 12 people feel this way. Want a tax rebate or taxes suspended due to restricted access. On this one, I will comment. Mike, maybe, do you want to chime in? This is actually illegal for us to do. Is that correct?
That's correct. The general statutes only allow a refund of property taxes for certain reasons. There are only three of them. That's if the tax is an illegal tax, a tax imposed for an illegal purpose, or a tax that was imposed through clerical error. And so you do not have statutory authority to make any modification to taxes that have already been assessed. Obviously, you can always lower the tax rate in the next budget year, but you can't do anything about current taxes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Item five, not fair that locals and workers can come and go, possibly spreading the virus. 11 people feel this way. Non-resident property owners or taxpaying citizens who are being treated unfairly. 10 people feel this way. Should be treated as a resident because it's a second home, not a rental. Six people. Four people complained about the short notice of access restriction. Four people want a phased reentry to have time to prepare their rental homes. Four people like a financial inspection of visitors allowed into shop, financial aspect of, financial aspect of visitors allowed into shops, restaurants, et cetera, is important. Four people feel this way. Three people have complained about a loss of rental income. Two, lack of county catastrophic planning, and want a better one for the future. Two people, not allowing a child relative slash relative driving separately to enter Corolla. Two was in a, people were in Corolla before the SOE went into effect, should be allowed to leave and reenter. Simply request that the board open access. Two people. One person complained about KOA opening on the mainland and bringing visitors into the county, and one complained directly toward Dare County. That was, I guess we received one of their emails. Gee, questions that were raised. What are the public health metrics being used to decide if we're going to reopen? Two people on that one. When will the bridge reopen to NRPOs? We will be discussing that on our next agenda item. Want a clear explanation of exactly what a non-resident property owner is. Please advise on procedures when bridge opens. Example, a family traveling in two cars. Ask about homeowner's liability if a renter gets the COVID-19 while in their house. What if Kerrittuck opens and Dare still controls the bridge? Have the commissioners with tourism-related businesses recuse themselves or sought an opinion from ethics experts? Is Kerrittuck following the governor's plan closely? Does the county have enough tests, resources, and workers? And what are the requirements of the county to test, trace, and study? The last two, does the county have enough tests, resources, and workers? If you were listening, is really under Almar Regional Health Services. Kerrittuck County does not do that. That is a function of Almar Regional Health Service, as with the testing, tracing, and studying. We do not do medical care here in this county. If there's a spike, how will the county execute a shutdown and evacuation order? That one I can actually answer. We do it every time we have a hurricane. It's pretty simple to notify that we're going to be closing and offer people to leave and phase them out if we need to. And then we had one non-related to access restriction, and someone wants beach parking permits to be mailed instead of having to pick them up. Perhaps, though, some of the questions we could go through and answer now that I've read through them, just to kind of put people's mind at ease. The bridge opening will be our next agenda item. A non-resident property owner, I would think, is fairly clear. It's someone who owns property in this county but does not live here or claim this as their primary residence. If you have this as your primary residence, you would be registered to vote here, have your vehicles registered here, and have a driver's license here. That would make you a resident of this county. We've heard from people, quite a few people, and they plan to move here, but they still haven't bothered to do that, I believe. And maybe Mr. McCree can chime in on this, or even Kevin. If you're here residing in the county over 90 days, are you not supposed to become, declare this as a residency? Does that sound about right?
I don't recall the statutory number of days right offhand, but certainly, if you have established residency in North Carolina and in this county, you're expected to do several things under the statutes, including the change of your driver's license, registration of your motor vehicles, and then license plates to be issued. And then we get into the whole issue about, under election law, when you're deemed to have established residency for purposes of being eligible to register to vote and to vote in elections in North Carolina.
Thank you. We'll address what happens if Kerrittuck opens and Dare still controls the bridge in our next discussion item. I don't have to recuse myself. Again, Mr. McCree, it seems like you do this about every other meeting. When is a commissioner required to recuse themselves from a vote?
Well, actually, a commissioner is required by statute to vote on all items that come before the board unless the item relates specifically to that commissioner's financial interest specifically, or to their character. And so with regard to an issue that relates to a business, it would be more determinative if, not that you might have a financial benefit from some action that's taken, it's, I'm sorry, it's a question, not if you have a financial interest, but if you're going to have some kind of financial benefit that is different than others that might be similarly situated. So if you're a business owner, the fact that you may take some action while it might benefit you... you is also benefiting a significant number of other people or persons or businesses would not constitute a reason for you under the statute to excuse yourself from voting on that matter.
So, in my personal case, because my wife and I have a house that we do rent in the Outer Banks and the Outer Banks, that too would fall under that.
That's correct. It's kind of like a continuum. The way I describe it at the School of Government, it's a continuum. So you look at the line, you know, how many people are maybe affected by the decision that you were voting on versus the other end of the continuum? Is it just me, the voting commissioner? And so the more people that are similarly situated or will be benefiting in a similar way, then the less likely it is to be a conflict of interest or some vote that you should ask to be excused from.
So Commissioner Beaumont and myself, both, I have rental property out there as well, and of course my businesses, because this action is going to be county-wide and affect every single person in some way, shape, or form, we are not required to step away from this particular vote.
Yeah, that's correct. In my opinion, you are not required. In fact, I think you are required by statute to vote.
Right, okay, thank you. I think that covers the, is Currituck following the governor's plan closely? Ben Stike Leather, our county manager, probably could speak to that a little better, and I would say yes.
Yes, we are. We're following all the guidance that's come out of the governor's office. We're enforcing, the sheriff's office is enforcing all of the executive orders that have come down. We followed the executive orders as far as water bills are concerned, water cutoffs are concerned. We're following all the federal guidelines that have come down as far as new HR policies and rules, as far as Family Medical Leave Act goes. And we are, as an operational unit, addressing any issues such as social distancing and promoting telework where possible.
Thank you. Would any of the commissioners like to comment on any of the things submitted here before we move on? Okay. I think at this time I'll close public comment and move on to administrative reports. COVID-19 discussion of current declaration and deadlines. And that's basically board discussion on when we're going to reopen and what's that going to look like, which was several of the questions and the emails generated. And Ben, did you want to lead us off on any part of that at all? Any thoughts?
I can set the stage just a little bit. So we are, our current state of emergency as far as restrictions to non-resident property owners and visitors is set to expire at eleven fifty-nine on April thirtieth. So as of May one right now, if we don't amend that, then anybody could come into the Currituck County Outer Banks, assuming that they can come through the checkpoint with the Dare County man's, which I've talked to their county manager, and we can work through that situation, I believe. So really, the discussion that the board needs to have tonight is a couple of things. Non-resident property owners, when should they come in? Visitors, when should they come in? And for the point of clarity for non-resident property owners, what does that mean as far as who can come in? Relating to the one question that came up here, is it the non-resident property owner and anybody with them? Is it the non-resident property owner and immediate family in their home? Is it just people that have the pass, for instance? So just so that staff has good guidelines, your staff has done a tremendous job, emergency management, the clerk to the board, your PIO, fielding a lot of emails and phone calls over the last little bit, so we just want to continue to be as consistent as possible with the policies that the board wishes to move forward with.
Okay.
And even if we allow the property owners to come back in, the beaches themselves, the facilities and everything, restaurants could still be closed.
That's correct. The restaurants right now are closed under an executive order by the governor. For instance, the federal lands that are currently there are closed by the federal government right now. The county bathroom facilities at Corova will continue to be closed. Those would not reopen. So there are a lot of guidelines that fall under the governor's mandate or potentially federal mandates. The only thing that you all have restricted under the current state of emergency is access across the Wright Memorial Bridge into the Currituck Outer Banks. And you right now do have a restriction that says no more than fifty people could be at a mass gathering, but the governor has gone down to ten people, so it supersedes that anyway.
Now, the beaches are not closed, right?
That's correct. In Currituck County, the beaches are still open, except for federal land and state land.
Right.
But the rest of the beaches are open.
And one thing I'd like to say, and this is kind of ironic, but the beach is probably one of the healthiest places that you could go to.
Right, right.
During any kind of a health virus-type situation, ultraviolet light is death to viruses. So being out in the sunshine is actually, I would encourage people to go to the beach.
Just not.
Just don't gather in large groups and huddle together.
Right. When you've got a fifteen-bedroom house, it kind of seems superlative a little bit. Okay, well, it's a big question before the board is, and Ben and I had this discussion in our latest video. When are we going to reopen? And the general discussion amongst us behind the scenes, I feel like, has been to let the non-resident property owners in beginning May first, and then two weeks thereafter on the fifteenth, which is a Friday, or sixteenth, which is a Saturday, start letting visitors back in. I would say for the visitors, that's a target date. It could easily be changed if we have problems crop up here and one we may have to change. But as of now, it appears that those are kind of doable things, and it will ease people in. And so that's part of the discussion before the board tonight is, what does the board want to see happen, and how's that going to look?
Well, I certainly think we're dependent on Dare County. You said they might work with us, but...
Yes.
I have every belief that they'll work with us.
I have had multiple conversations over the last several weeks with their chairman, Bob Water, and Ben has been in contact with their county manager, and they very much are supportive of us. I think at this time, they've talked to their control group, as far as I know, and they're talking about that right now at their meeting as well. I have told him, you know, where our general thoughts were at, and they were supportive of that and letting our resident owners come in and then tourists come in in a couple of weeks, provided no major outbreaks happen or anything of that nature.
So, after listening to Battle's, I'm sorry, did you have a follow-up question?
I was going to say, I personally don't see any reason why we couldn't start phasing it in immediately.
Or why not just go ahead and lift the ban on non-resident property owners this Friday, for example? You know, Friday would bring some people the weekend in if we wait to an arbitrary date on May first. Kind of a, you know, it's just because it's the first doesn't mean it's the best day.
Right, not at all.
But this Friday might be a good, those people especially that have the weekend to come down, and I know a lot of the emails address the fact that they've had storm damage. They're worried about the windstorms we've had with their furniture. Certainly, a lot of them worried about the mice and the rats, the damage that might have been done in their absence. So I think, you know, looking at this Friday might be a good date to get some of those non-resident property owners down here to try.
I would even go as far, because there is going to be some slowdown, there's going to be some whatever. I tend to agree with Kitty. I mean, effective tomorrow.
Can I touch on the bridge thing? I mean, like I said, obviously, in my other capacity far as the bridge and actually by water too, far as to the Corova, you know, ever since this came in check, I think I had eight boat shifts where I've worked, you know, where people were trying to come over to Corova. When they come to the bridge, they have their paperwork, they have their ID. We ID every person in the car, so it's not just the guy in the front, the guy in the passenger. We ID every person. We have a set schedule where we assist Dare County. If somebody has paperwork, which this would be something whenever we choose that day, if I own a home in Corolla and I have paperwork showing, you know, I own that home, I mean, that's something, it takes a little bit of time, but it's not going to take Monday through Friday, the morning times, and I've worked all of them. The morning times, when they're coming across, it's really busy in the morning when everybody's going to work from Currituck County. It amazed me how many people actually work in Dare County that live in Currituck. That was a learning experience for myself. But like the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, when I worked the bridge, you know, it was a lot quieter. There's typically four to six officers out there working the bridge, one from Currituck and four from Dare. Obviously, it's on their side, so we're assisting. And if it was, you know, if they had paperwork, whenever we decide they're going to just have to show that stuff, or if it was their pass, like the reentry pass from hurricanes, the non-resident pass, they've tried to use those, they've tried to use, I've seen a lot of paper driver's licenses where people, like you said, have physically gotten a driver's license in Corolla now because they're trying to, they want to be at the beach, which I get it. So far as, and I had a meeting with the sheriff today for about an hour because I knew this was going to be brought up today, and since we have the maximum capacity of people that we can have in the room for the governor's order, that's why I had that meeting with him today. Either or, whatever the date we open it, far as the deputies, the manpower, whatever we have to do, it's handleable, you know, far as like with the paper, and we've turned a lot of people around. I mean, you know, and I've turned around in the boat and I've turned around in the car. They don't like it, but sometimes we have to do tough things in our jobs, and it is what it is. So if they have the proper paperwork, it wouldn't add that much to what's going on at the bridge now.
I'm sorry. So two of the things that Battle brought up and Owen actually alluded to, that study out of Washington is the IHME study, and that's the one that Battle believes, right? That's the one that is their prime driver, that's the one that he wishes they do quicker updates, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That is the one that I think glaringly points out that if you're over the age of sixty with a compromised immune system or a compromised health system, you are at risk for contracting and fatally contracting the COVID virus. With the exception of that, it is not, I mean, and that study shows the lethality isn't nearly what it was thought to be, and as Battle attested to, as we start testing more and more people, we're going to find out a lot of us had it, didn't even know it, and away we went. So with that said, you know, and this is still America, and everybody has a personal, you know, responsibility and, you know, needs to take ownership, you know, we're not guaranteeing anyone that if they come to Currituck County, they're not going to contract COVID. You could have got it at the gas station, come and down, whatever. There is no guarantee. You, the visitor, the owner, need to make a determination and take, you know, take responsibility that if you travel, you know what you're getting into. And anyone that's confused at this point in time really needs to, you know, plug back in. So with that said, you know, I think that as soon as we can get, and I'll go back to our one May opening date, right, where it sits, and I get it, that could be a moving target. But this is a great way to start easing into this, where people can start, you know, traveling, they can start coming down, they can get their houses ready, because I've heard, oh, at least once, that people need time to get their houses ready. And in fact, that's probably the most glaring complaint, is that we need to get ready for the season. So that cuts off that two weeks of dead time that the property management is, companies have been asking for, you know, et cetera, et cetera. So I tend to agree with Kitty. I think the sooner, the sooner we can let non-property or non-resident property owners back in, I think it does a lot of things.
I think we can get the message, if we can get the message out to, I don't want people to misconstrue when we say it's open. I don't want a huge influx of people coming down here and assuming that the county is open to day trippers and things like that. So as long as we can get the message out about how they reenter, who, and we haven't answered that question yet, just who is going to be allowed in, as long as we can get that message out clearly and make people understand what documentation they need, who's allowed in, that they should be bringing supplies because, let's face it, there are shortages.
That is a problem, and that's one of the reasons why we looked at the end of the month, okay? The grocery stores are kind of in winter mode right now, and they're not, they have to have the ability to ramp up to get supplies in, and that's a lag. I mean, hell, we can't even get toilet paper. So meats, you know, the produce, things of that nature are going to take a little while to get moving and get here, and that is one of the things, and Ben, chime in please.
Yes, I actually asked Larry Lombardi, our Economic Development Director, to reach out to the grocery store managers, and they said a week to a week and a half is, a week to a week and a half is roughly what they would need to be ready.
You know, I'm all for opening it up tomorrow, but would we be going against the governor's orders and federal orders when they say no travel?
I don't think so.
No. I mean, it's a recommendation.
Yeah, it's a recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to be, I'd like, Commissioner Payman, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just waiting for a turn to get...
You're up, I'm next.
Okay, thank you. Just, I'm a business owner as well, I've got employees, but I've been talking to some local business owners, and they agree with the phasing process. But they also said, look, you know, we feel that the non-prof, non-resident property owners lifting that immediately, that would bring in a little bit more traffic, and it could possibly grab some of that traffic to start helping them out. And they understand, yeah, let's phase in the tourist side of it a little later, but they believe that that little bit of traffic would help them a little bit. And the comments were also, like Commissioner Beaumont stated, the individuals understand now what we're dealing with, they understand the distancing, wear masks, hand sanitizers. So they understand, you know, what's out there better than they did three, four weeks ago. And I think, you know, just talking to the businesses, that's how they feel as well, is look, let's release it immediately, let's get a little bit of traffic going to help us, and they're going to do what they need to at their places to maintain safety standards, which we're doing now. But I would agree, I think the sooner the better on that. And they do agree with the phasing of the tourist part of it there to let, ease it in, but they feel like immediately opening for non-residents, it would be helpful to them because they say any day now without any type of additional support could kill them.
I mean, like I said, it's going to require a little bit more work, and that's why I had that meeting today with the sheriff, you know, on the deputies, but we're up for it. I mean, like I said, if it's open tomorrow, if it's, you know, at seven AM tomorrow, whenever, they're up for it, it's going to be a little bit more paperwork, you know, has to be shown on our end, but, you know, manpower-wise, we're there, protect and serve, and that'll be serving the people that pay taxes here as well. Like you said, I mean, and I'm out in it every day, every single day, at the sheriff's department or out working for myself. I mean, the people and the citizens of this community have done a phenomenal job far as, you know, you go into a restaurant, you're not using the bathroom in that restaurant, they're not allowing you, you're not, you know, there's signs where you can have two people in at this spot, and I mean, like I said, everybody's advised by the governor's order really, really well, and these people coming from somewhere else, they're a non-resident property owner, you know, they're already doing that stuff somewhere else as well. I mean, it's not just here, it's everywhere. So I'm for, like you said, moving forward, as Commissioner Etheridge said, and Commissioner Beaumont, and Commissioner Payman as well as Commissioner Jarvis. Let's open it up and phase it in.
One thought would be, in getting that word out, you can also put, you need to be prepared to bring your supplies because quantities may be limited, et cetera, et cetera, and we put that out at the same time.
That's definitely part of the messaging.
I mean, to me, anybody that would travel now to the Outer Banks and didn't pack a lunch...
Well, I was in Walmart the other day, I bought some rain pants when it was pouring down raining, and I was in Walmart after I left.
After it was raining.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah. But like I said, Walmart, now you might not get that filet that you want or whatever, there's food in there, there's a lot of food in there. So, I mean, I know there's stock, you might not find toilet paper and whatever, and you might not find some of the other stuff. Bring your own supplies, have some common sense. And like you said, if they come to that bridge or they come across that water and they don't have the paperwork that they have, they're going to get turned around, just like if they lived in wherever.
Okay, so it seems to me that Friday, give us a few days to get our message out.
Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
As long as we can get the message out, I mean, I'm good with any day. I mean, I just feel like we just need, I would hate to think that someone travels here from Pennsylvania.
We have to talk to Dare County, okay? We have to talk to them because they are...
Well, that's part of it too.
Contingent on what they do.
Right, it is contingent on their support, and, you know, right now, they are supportive of us at the end of the month, so ten days from now. So they may be just fine. I haven't had that conversation with them. They are being much more cautious than we are, I think, but they have twenty-five thousand residents, and, you know, we have five hundred in Corolla or whatever it is.
I think you have to look at the reality of the situation. People are getting tired of staying at home. I had to go pick up a prescription yesterday up in Chesapeake. It was as packed as it was at Christmas time, people in and out of Walmart. The Home Depot parking lot was full, people were standing, thirty people in line to get in.
Did you wear your mask?
I didn't go in.
So, you know, people...
So, you know, people.
They're done. I mean, rally.
Everybody's moving. I was out this weekend in the farm in the middle of Virginia and there was an amazing amount of traffic for, for Saturday and Sunday.
So, Mr. Chairman, if, if, I don't know how you want us to help you, but I, I would make the motion that effective 0700 Wednesday morning, Currituck Outer Banks are open to non-resident property owners.
I would like to jump in there. Kevin said, Mr. McCord said there were a lot of people who worked down there. Maybe if we moved the time back, that might help.
Well, that, uh, time back and the other thing I had been talking about a little bit was do a pause, uh, odds and evens. So Wednesday evens come in, Thursday odds.
But I'm talking about instead of.
If your property address is an odd address, you would come in Thursday and it, and it just spreads out.
Yeah, so Tuesday, Wednesday then. She's talking about.
I'm talking about the time of the day.
And the time of the day.
Yeah, the time of the day, because it is.
Those things all add up to a little bit more easy transition.
Nine o'clock versus seven o'clock?
But we also need to hammer out who can come in.
If you say seven o'clock, there's workers going in. So if we say you can't get into nine, it'll open up from nine.
Phases down to nine o'clock.
Yeah.
So by nine o'clock, you're dropping off?
At big times.
That would help the businesses.
But I think Paul, in your motion, you need to make it contingent on Dare County's.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, yes, absolutely. So, let me.
But you don't, you don't.
Go ahead.
So, go ahead.
For the, for the sake of your staff, if we could make it, give us a couple of days to get emergency management ready.
Yeah.
And get the message together. And I mean, because we're going to have a lot of people who want passes. It, if we can have a couple of days and, and even Thursday would be good, but give us, because I mean, we'll communicate this tomorrow morning to that staff, it'd be helpful.
And Paul, I don't think you need a motion, I just need to know what you want. They're going to write it up and I'll sign it.
Got it.
Okay, so, um.
So if I, if I hear us write, no matter what we decide to do tonight, Dare County's driving this.
To some degree.
To some extent.
To some degree, but they're, they're willing, they, they understand, they're ready to reopen too. So that's not, you know, but that just.
They actually, this may actually help them.
Yeah, we get ours out of the way.
Okay, well, that's fine, I just don't want them to, to, you know, our decisions have to be contingent on.
I retract my motion.
Thank you.
Are we going to say Thursday, Friday?
So, how about Thursday, okay. So does the odd and even thing make any sense to you at all or just let it go free fall?
I think you go Thursday.
Okay.
But I think Kitty's idea of saying nine o'clock, I think is smart.
Nine AM Thursday. Okay, nine AM Thursday.
Dare County did not, they pushed theirs to their next meeting far as open. I just got a message.
Oh, did they?
I would also think that every day they can't enter in till nine o'clock. There might be a lot of people that come on Thursday, but then on Friday, they start coming at seven in the morning.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, they had to ride the eight hardware.
Not going to be any worse than a normal Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I mean, it's not going to be worse than a Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
I just want Mike to get to work.
Thank you.
Mike's, Mike's at work at six, so that's not a problem. And then the only other thing would be, um, I would suggest that the immediate family at a minimum, right? The immediate family of that property owner would be allowed.
Yeah, because most of what we heard is they want to get in to check their houses.
So they'd have to go in together.
So one car is what you're suggesting, one car?
Well, what if it's his family?
When we said going together, are we talking a caravan or one car?
We're not talking about going there vacation. We're talking about going there, get their.
House ready, fix something.
Get their personal items out and get ready for vacation.
And sometimes you need the whole immediate family to get that.
Well, that's going to happen and Uncle, Uncle Charlie's going to come to help because he's good at doing siding.
Exactly.
Well, he needs to get a pass through.
So the real question is, if they're going to the address, do we care? If they're bringing in family to their home to get it ready, what does that look like? Do we really care? So to that end, what makes sense for you, Ben, for staff?
Well, I mean.
Or to the sheriff's department, because we've got to tell them something.
Yeah, I mean, from a, from an enforcement standpoint, from an explanation standpoint, if we just say that you either have to have a tax bill and a driver's license showing the address or a non-resident property owner permit, and then anybody in vehicles behind you can come in, that's the easiest thing to do.
I think that, that's the way it needs to happen.
Instead of us splitting families up at the checkpoint.
They have it, we have them come to the bridge on a regular basis where there were some guys doing some kind of work at something. They were working on one of the bridges. And then he was like, and they literally, I think they like, you know, they're letting the, the cars merge together and they'd be lined right up. I mean, the, the people that are going through every day, they got the system down. They put clipboards up there with the IDs and.
That's one thing, um, I went and talking to Dare, they were thinking about doing, just getting off on the side a little bit, right lane, um, resident entry, left lane.
Yeah, because we, in the morning times, we have.
Something like that, you know.
In the morning times, when it's busy, we have two lanes going because it's, it's busy. Yeah, that's, I, I make the schedule for our shift for the day, so it's no biggie.
Now, one point of clarification for staff, if we decide to say that, you know, if the people that come with you can come through the checkpoint, invariably, we're going to get the question, well, my adult child can't come until two days later.
Then you're going to have to drive to the bridge, pick up your adult child and escort your adult child across the bridge.
Good deal.
Sorry for the inconvenience.
Okay, so we got to get that messaging out then as well. Okay, so nine o'clock Thursday morning, let them in. Messaging to bring a lot of supplies with them because the availability is, is limited to none right now.
Especially toilet paper.
Especially toilet paper, there is none.
Bi-sol, paper towels.
Because we're not reopening restaurants.
Right. Right, that's a, right.
But they can do to goes.
Yes, and help the business.
And help them, their businesses out.
And I imagine pizza will be flying out of there.
Probably pizza will be busy.
Right, so it'll be good. Okay, um, all right, then, uh, do you guys want to set the visitors at the 15th at this point in time? And we'll look at that at some point in time in, in May, mid-May? When do you want the visitors in?
When's our next meeting?
May 4th.
May 2nd or 4th, something like that, yeah.
May 4th.
So, um, that's not enough time. I'm sorry, I can't do that. That's not enough time for the property owners to get their properties ready, the support industries to get in there, to fix stuff, to get the pools open. You know, they need a couple of weeks at a minimum to get the properties ready to go.
And I don't think I saw in any email that, that referenced that they wanted tourism at a certain date.
They wanted to get their stuff fixed and get it ready.
So in talking to people, and a lot of the business owners that are in the contract types, uh, they need that couple of weeks in between.
Then on May the 4th, we'll decide when.
Okay, so I thought you were trying to say May 4th.
I mean, could we tentatively say May 15th and then it may change on the 4th? And that's what we have now, correct?
Yeah, on the 4th, we get, we could vote to change on the 4th if we want to.
Well, I think it expires at the.
For the, for the purpose of the state of emergency, I would put, we, we probably should put a date in there. It just makes it cleaner, so we could put the 15th and then you all could revisit it on the 4th.
On the 4th if we had to.
Okay. All right, so we'll discuss the tourism, we'll put it at the 15th and we'll bring that back up at our next meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay. Does that cover everything on this for you? Were we clear on all points, et cetera?
Uh, yes, sir. So what, what we will do is we'll, we'll draft a new state of emergency and get the chairman to sign it tomorrow. And then we will start messaging tomorrow about re-entry for non-resident property owners.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go back to the, the delay conversation.
Okay.
Quickly. And I, I don't belong to a Brinley Beach or a, you know, Twitty, so I don't know how those systems work. So my question is, um, are you, if your house is in a rental program, are you required to rent your house at all?
Are you required to rent your house?
Are you obligated? Let me give you.
To not rent your house, is that, to not rent your.
Are you obligated to rent your house? In other words. Well, let me give you, okay, so if my house is not ready, right? Because either I couldn't get there this Friday and I need time to get there and get whatever done, or my property management company needs time to get it done, isn't that a decision that the property management company and/or the owner get to make? I mean, there are a, a lot of folks that rent their houses themselves, I being one of them, right? And that has become an increasingly popular option. I mean, my house could be ready tomorrow morning, for example. Now, that's a decision that I made and many other people made. So when you say that there are not enough time for them to get the houses ready, I mean, we know, I talked to Bobby. I, you know, the pool guy's been a very busy guy getting spas and pools ready to go. So I'm not sure I'm, I buy into, to me, Currituck County getting in the middle of a property management company and an owner and their customer is not the place the county should be.
Can we just do that?
I'm sorry?
Can we just do that?
What?
Kick the visitors out till the end of the month?
You're not required, I had a reeler. This property manager sent me a message.
If there's a hurricane, we just, we just did that. I mean, we just, we just.
Okay, I understand that. But when that obstruction to the hurricane passes, right? As soon as it's safe, we allow people back in. As soon as power gets restored so that we can pump water in the tanks, we open the doors after we gave the owners an opportunity to check for damage. But we're doing that now. Non-resident property owners have the ability to, they or, I mean, to me, if they're with a property rent management company and that property management company isn't checking on the property that they manage, that's another conversation between the owner and the property management company.
Right.
So.
So what would it look like? What, what would you suggest?
I think when the restrictions come off that, you know.
Can I answer? I got a, I've received a message, I guess, from somebody watching the, um, she's in property management. She sent me a message and said to your question, they're not required to rent it. So like, say it wasn't ready for some reason.
They, exactly.
They could say, no, it's not ready because the bathroom's broke or whatever.
They're not required to.
They're not required.
So, so to me, then, we should, that's for the property management company and the property owner to, to decide when that, that house is ready to rent. And, and I. Correct. I think this is in fact what we're doing. We've notified the grocery stores that, by the way, people are going to start rolling in, right? Non-resident property owners are going to start rolling in, start ordering your groceries.
So you're saying we should let visitors in at the same time?
No.
As none?
No. What I'm saying, what I'm saying is if we left one May as the, or we can make it the next commissioner's meeting, that right now, whenever we set that unless something radically changes to adversely impact the situation, we allow, we start allowing visitors in.
But the 15th gives us, if we say the 15th, that gives us time to assess it and don't, and maybe not give people false hope. So if, if on the 4th, this looks like a disaster and visitors shouldn't be coming in that are expecting to coming in, then we have to change it on the 4th, then we've really caused issues for a lot of people. Whereas if we say the 15th and allow it on the 4th to happen on the 5th, to me.
That's fine.
I mean, to me.
We can change it.
Less exercise caution.
That's fine.
And we can go back and remedy that.
We turned away, we turned away one at the bridge that had booked a hotel at one of the hotels down there and they actually took the reservation. We turned the people around.
I think it's an issue of fairness. You can't open it for one segment and not open it for another. Everything needs to start at one time.
In terms of visitors.
Right.
Yes.
Right. Okay. So.
So the 15th to me is cautious.
As of right now, we'll look at it again on our.
Cautiously optimistic.
All right. You good, Ben?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And don't come early on Thursday, the, uh, whatever day that is, because my shift's working. I'm usually 6:30 to 8:30 out there, so don't even try it, because I will turn you around.
Okay.
Devil on nation.
All right, uh, well, that was, uh, one of our more interesting debates. I think it was on my time as a commissioner.
It was a discussion.
It's a nice debate discussion. All right, commissioner's report. Commissioner Payman, you got anything for us this evening?
Well, discussed a lot of it here with the reopening piece, but just wanted to thank, um, our responders and the sheriff's department and the board of commissioners and staff, everybody for just working through this. I mean, we've had some trying times, some, some interesting emails, conversations, phone calls. And I think we've worked on the best we can trying to look out for the well-being of our citizens and our businesses locally. And, and I think we're, uh, we're making some good hard decisions to, to move this forward. And I just want to thank everybody, that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Edgers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, the Social Service Board had a meeting by teleconference, first time I've ever done that. And Director Samantha Hurd asked me to read the following. "On behalf of the staff at the Department of Social Services, I would like to express our sincere gratitude for the provisions made by the Board of Commissioners and the county manager in order to protect the safety and well-being of our employees. We have been provided with all the resources and technology we needed to effectively do our jobs remotely. We are deeply appreciative of the ability to teleconference. Although some of our staff cannot teleconference exclusively, we have received a supply of personal protection equipment to keep them safe while we're performing their essential duties in the community. We look forward to getting back to normal operations soon. Samantha Hurd, Director at the Department of Social Services." I'd like to thank Ms. Hurd, but I also think that we're the ones who should be thanking her as well as the other departments. All the employees here in Currituck County are working really hard to serve our community. Their dedication makes me proud to represent Currituck County. And I also have another proud Currituck moment to share. Each year, North Carolina names recipients of the Matthews Medal, which is the highest non-academic distinction awarded to a North Carolina State University student. This award recognizes seniors who have made significant contributions to the university and also left a lasting legacy. This year, there were four awards and one went to Currituck's own Mary Kate Morgan. Mary Kate is the daughter of Mel and Amy Morgan, the granddaughter Wade and Joanne Morgan, and Sam and Patsy Casey. While attending, excuse me, while attending North Carolina State, Mary Kate was president of the Alumni Association Student Ambassador Program and a university ambassador. She was the vice president of North Carolina's FFA Association at North Carolina State, along with other several achievements she was awarded. I'd like to congratulate Mary Kate and congratulate all of our high school and college graduates who will be graduating soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Beaumont?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of recap, some of the things we discussed this evening. First of all, uh, you know, the, the, well, I'm a, during my previous life, I, I was a biological warfare officer. So we had to deal with, you know, a lot of the things and the aspects of viruses that are, you know, it clearly still remain one of the greatest threats to mankind, if you will. Every time there's a new virus, there's a lot of unknowns. And, um, you know, kudos to basically all levels of government, including our, our local government, for doing and putting into, into place the measures that in, in fact, were essential in, in flattening the curve. And, and we've heard that, but I think one of the things that, that folks misunderstand about flattening the curve, flattening the curve has nothing to do with reducing the number of sick or reducing the number of fatalities due to that, that aspect of health. All flattening of the curve is intended to do is to try to minimize or eliminate a severe spike and drain on our, our health resources. And, um, you know, our, as North Carolinians, we should be grateful and proud of the fact that through our, our behavior, we have succeeded in flattening the curve. That said, we hear frequently on the national scene and critique about some of the actions that have been undertaken as to it's not time yet to take some of these restrictions off. Not me. And, um, you know, and the term that I keep hearing over and over again is we're moving the goalposts, right? Originally, the goal was to flatten the curve. Now we're trying to, you know, we're adding a lot of extra steps, which, you know, we need to understand this virus is going to be here for probably the rest of our lives. And there'll be another one. There will be another virus that will affect our society. That's just going to happen. We need to be focused on what we're doing and why we're doing it. And I'm, I'm grateful that this board is actually doing that. But keep in mind, you know, if we waited, for example, as some I've heard, that we're going to wait for a vaccine to come out. going to wait for a vaccine to come out. A vaccine is a long way off and may never come out. The point is, you know, stick to the, stick to the original goal and see that goal to its conclusion. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I got a few things. Like I said, I'd like to thank the board as well. The county staff's done a phenomenal job. You know, Commissioner Etheridge brought up about social services in my other line of work. The calls don't stop coming in to dispatch just because of the pandemic. They've done a great job. They call you right back. A lot of them are working from home. They've assisted in numerous ways, and I appreciate what they've done. Last week, I'm stealing this one from you, Owen, you might have forgot it, so, was telecommunicator week.
You forgets nothing.
And like I said, our dispatch, you know, it's kind of forgotten, probably with all this stuff going on with the COVID-19. Like I said, I want to appreciate or thank them, and we really appreciate, our dispatch does a phenomenal job. They get phone calls about stuff that has nothing to do with stuff, and they still do a good job. The county staff and all, everybody's done really, really well. Emergency management, Mary Beth, she, I don't know why she always gets forgotten, but Mary Beth does a phenomenal job. She assisted with a couple unique situations that we had at the bridge, and, you know, she came up with a really, really good scenario for both of them. I had a guy, they needed a pass to move five heavy pieces of furniture, and he knew nobody down here. They got a pass. The guy sent me a text message. He left. He got in, he texted and said he got his pass. Thank you, Mary Beth helped him. He moved the things, and in under an hour, he was out of Kitty Hawk and already back heading, heading home. So I appreciate her for all she's done and everybody else. The deputies, you know, my fellow comrades that I work with, I mean, disputes are up, people are arguing because everybody's locked in the house. People try to get along with each other. You know, it's, it's been some trying times financially as well as other things for everybody. The weather's been terrible, too, so that don't help. But like I said, keep doing everything, practice social distancing, six feet apart. If you notice, we're all six feet apart. We're 27 feet from the county staff. No, just a joke to you guys. But, you know, practice that stuff. You know, like you said, if you feel you're vulnerable, if the governor relieves some of this stuff, as well as us relieving some of the, letting some of the, if you feel you're vulnerable and you have a weak immune, stay home. You know, there's, there's services out there where the county can, can bring you stuff. The school systems, I like to commend them, too. I almost forgot that. The meals on wheels and the backpack for kids. There's a lot of kids in this county that would not have received food and would not have ate had it not been for that. Phenomenal program. They did a great job. We helped the deputies as well as, you know, delivering some of the stuff. They're out there today, and the poor now reign. But that was, you know, like I said, there's so many kids in this county that you'd be amazed that would not get food. And the other thing, I was at some of the sites on days when we worked, the kids were so appreciative. So that was pretty cool. But that's it for me. I think I pretty much hit everything. And Owen, I didn't mean to take, you're probably not getting dinner for the rest of April for the telecommunicator.
Well, that's a nice segue to Commissioner Etheridge over there, now that you've got them grounded.
Well, as Kevin did say, last week was telecommunicators week. And I like to brag about our telecommunicators because I do happen to be married to one, and I know what they go through. And they are the true first responders, because if they don't get the information correct, they don't, the people that respond to the emergency does not know where to go or what they're walking into. And I can tell you, it's a very thorough process, the protocol they go through when they answer a call and try to get as much information so that when Kevin goes to a position or a place, he knows what he's walking into to the best of the ability of gathering that. I'd like to thank the citizens of Currituck County, because as of today, we do not have an active case of coronavirus in Currituck County. We've had two lab confirmed cases in Currituck, and both of those individuals have recovered. Without some good common sense, and I give people of Currituck County a lot of credit because we do have a lot of common sense in Currituck, you've helped keep this virus down. I'm firmly convinced of that. And because of your efforts, we were able to make the actions or take the actions that we're talking about here tonight to try to get our economy reopened. I responded to an individual that texted me this afternoon that, in my experience in financial planning and financial services, economic death is just as bad as physical death from the standpoint that in physical death, that individual has left the earth. And yes, it's sad for the family and everything, but economic death, life continues. And if they don't have the resources, and we see people in these small businesses who have invested their life savings, and they're at the risk of losing that, losing their homes and anything else that they've got financially. And to sit here and make decisions without citizen cooperation, we can write all the regulations we want to write, but unless the citizens cooperate with us, they're not worth the paper they're written on. So again, thank you to the citizens of Currituck County. We appreciate your efforts in fighting this. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Jarvis?
Thank you. Forty days is a common thread in the Bible. For forty days, Noah and his family were forced to live in an ark with every kind of animal known to man. Forty days, Jesus was tested in the desert by the devil without basic necessities of life. Those are just two reminders that I've pondered over the last few weeks since I've been relegated to my home with the stay-at-home orders that were put in place. When the governor's order expires at the end of this month, it would have, it will have been a little over forty days since restaurants were opened, forty days since people could celebrate birthdays and anniversaries and other milestones together as a family, and forty days watching with anxiety and fear as the number of Americans who are dying or sickened with COVID-19 rise. Just as Noah and his family emerged cautiously from that ark, so too will we. We may look at life as a beautiful gift, and may we continue to wash our hands, social distance, and take other necessary precautions after those forty days so we can relish time with our family, friends, and loved ones safely. These forty days have been scary, uncertain, and at times divisive. Most decisions have been unpopular with at least one group or the other. No decisions have been easy. It is my hope that when we emerge from this shelter-in-place order, that we emerge as more grateful for what we've learned about ourselves and others, and more aware of what we do have instead of what we don't have. I would also like to say kudos to Mary Kate Morgan. Kitty mentioned the award, the Matthews Medal that she was given. I taught Mary Kate, and she is a tribute to the boundless hours and boundless dedication of our public school system here in Currituck County. She is an amazing woman, and I know that wherever she lands, she will be wonderful. And finally, I do want to say, our staff is amazing in this county. I appreciate everything that all of our staff members have done for, throughout this time, and just really thank you because we couldn't be the county we are without you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll say thank you as well to our county staff as we've been producing these videos. Alex has done a great job helping keep me straight. So has Randall, our public information officer. And Mike Martini, who's not even a staff member, has been in helping video these things. So thank you to everyone, frontline people out there. I said it in my last video, and I'll say it again, they're, they're out there every day, never knowing what they're coming into contact with, and still there doing the job. So thank you all for all of that. As far as what we covered tonight with our non-resident property owners, I am sure that there, we're going to get a blitzkrieg of emails from the locals who are not going to be happy that we have let the non-resident property owners in because of fears of what they might bring with them. However, you know, it is America, as Commissioner Beaumont said earlier, and we do enjoy freedoms in this country. And I think this board in general cannot be party to further hampering or harming any of the businesses that are there. More lives are being destroyed, Commissioner Etheridge hit on that one, through economic death. And it's just a slow, slow downward spiral for these businesses. I mentioned my own business in one of the last videos, and normally I don't talk about my business that much and, and stay away from it. But I'm tired of getting hit for my business every time anything is said about anything. We saw it in emails tonight. I've owned a bunch of businesses in this county, and one time I had over 30 people working for me. My business brings in a ton of people into this county that come from outside of the area, from DARE, from other states, from other cities and other towns. Those people spend money in this economy. The tour, the horse tour industry is a huge economic driver in this county. And I have employees now that I'm still paying even though I didn't get the PPP money. I still got them on the payroll. I have one that needs cataract surgery I was willing to pay for, and I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to do that for him. I give away thousands of dollars every year in horse tours. Help the sheriff's department out for the last two years with their community outreach program for the kids. That program, I believe Commissioner Jarvis, you hit on that in one of your comments, has, has helped the recidivism rates for our kids staying out of trouble. Literally thousands of dollars I have lost to do that. And I don't claim that on my taxes. I just do it because I'm a good steward and a member of this county. I give away stuff to churches for fundraisers, to women's clubs, and all these other things. And the biggest thing, the biggest loss out of this is I'm not going to be able to do that this year. I'm not going to be able to be there for our kids because I don't know that I can afford to do that this year. I'm not sure what my business is going to look like in the coming years. I've been in business for 24 years, and over that time, I've opened 10 separate businesses. The horse tours has been a constant, and it has grown, and most of my businesses that I've sold off are still in business today. So not only did I contribute then, those businesses are still paying dividends in this county. So I would appreciate it if once in a while, somebody said thank you to me and to that business for all that we do for this county. The number of people that I employ, my trucks are built here, everything I do is in this county. And I'm sorry I had to go off tonight, but I have just had it with every time, why can't you shut the horse tours down? Because it's the number, it's the biggest economic driver here, just about. It is unbelievable. It is the number two tourist attraction in the state of North Carolina. It beat the mountains out. How about them apples? We've been featured on public TV, I don't know how many times. Jack Hanna's been here to look at the horses. It is an unbelievable resource that we have here that is managed properly, and all of the business owners are very responsible and caring and do our best to provide a good quality service while being cognizant of the impacts that we have on the area. So I just, I had to get that off of my chest. I apologize to anyone out there that's listening tonight, but I've just had enough of taking it on the chin after all that I have done for this, this county over the years. With that, I'm going to, before we jump into county manager's report, I'm going to take a brief recess and everybody stretch your legs for a minute. Thank you. All right, so we'll call the commissioner meeting back into order. One other thing I did forget to mention that happened today, there was an administrative ruling on elections. There was a hearing today at 1:00 PM. Kitty, did you know about this? That's the scary part. Thirteen-year veteran or seventeen, fifteen-year veteran did not know about that. It is about absentee voting and doing away with voting this year in person. What's more disconcerting to me is that I didn't know about it either. We didn't get any kind of notification that I'm aware of as a commissioner or anything at a state level. Bob Steinberg just posted something on it. Happened today at 1:00. There was a comment period from last week, apparently, on the.
1:00 PM or 1:00 AM?
1:00 PM.
Convenient time of the day.
Exactly. So anyway, I implore anyone out there that is as concerned as I am about absentee voting to look into this and, you know, get with their representatives, because I'm sure this is going to bear further investigation. If they decide to just do absentee voting this year, seems a little premature this far out, but it is disconcerting at the least because I believe there could be a lot of malfeasance going on with something like that. So anyway, just dig into that if you would, if you're out there listening tonight, and talk to your representatives if you feel that you'd like to see that reversed. And with that, I will move on to the county manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of quick updates. We have a lot of construction projects in the works right now. We've got the ABC store, we've got the public safety building, we've got the maritime museum, and we've got Shingle Landing Park. All of those are in various stages of construction. We do anticipate, especially on jobs where there are actual structures going up, such as a maritime museum, public safety, we are going to see some impact to the timeframe on those based on supply chain for metal trusses and metal products, steel products, that kind of thing. We also are going to be opening bids in two days on the sewer expansion for the Moayak wastewater plant. So going forward, that should have a timeline somewhere around May to July next year for completion, assuming that it doesn't get stuck in any kind of supply chain issues as well. We're moving forward on Moayak Commons wastewater plant to try to give some capacity for commercial businesses, hopefully by December with everything going on. Every timeline is kind of in flux right now. Couple of items that'll be coming to the board in the next little bit for you all just to kind of start thinking through. We've had an inquiry about leasing some open space in our commerce park for a drop lot for a trucking industry. So essentially, they don't build a building, it's just a place where they can drop trailers and pick them up. They might have interest in expanding in the future to do something. And also, we've had a request from the Corolla Volunteer Fire Department about constructing a fire training facility behind our current fire department at Pine Island. It would be on county property, so the board would have to approve that. I'll get some more details to you, and we can talk through that probably at a work session at some point.
Okay.
Public hearings, just so the public can hear this and knows what's going on, we are going to have to postpone all public hearings that aren't required by some kind of federal or state mandate. It's good guidance that's come out from the school of government, and so basically because people can't be here for the public hearing, there's some communities that have tried to do it remotely. As folks have probably picked up on, sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't work real well. And so, so that we can have due process moving forward, it's the staff's recommendation that all public hearings be tabled until the next meeting, and we just keep pushing them along until we get to the point where we can have more than 10 people in the room again. And finally, just to give an update on the operational status of the county as far as COVID and the impacts it has, we're going to continue to telework based on the recommendations coming from the state for the foreseeable future until the governor opens that back up some. We're going to also continue to, if the governor extends his stay-at-home order and extends the restriction on no more than 10 people at a mass gathering, we can expect for county functions and functions on county properties to be canceled as well. And so that essentially would mean that if we go much into May, then baseball and softball season for the rec league starts to have, starts to be impacted, so.
Weddings.
Weddings at the wellhead will be a big deal. Yeah, and we've got a couple of places that are still not open to the public in general, such as libraries and senior centers. Senior centers are going to be a real challenge with this going forward just because that is a high-risk population group. So just, we ask the citizens to be patient with us as we move forward. If you do have business with the county otherwise, we're still doing all of the same things we've been doing. We're doing most of it online. If you need to come see somebody in the county, you can call and make an appointment. We are trying to telework everybody that we can. But if you reach out to us, we can, we can set an appointment for you to come by and visit with a county staff member. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have about operational functions during this time.
So you guys aren't really, but you're not experiencing any major problems right now? You don't feel like, you feel like it's working well, that the public's being served, et cetera?
I believe so. I think that we're, we're doing all we can. We haven't had a lot of complaints. I believe that, and I think it was Commissioner Beaumont said it earlier, as this thing plays out longer, people's patience is going to get shorter, I believe. And so I think, I really appreciate the citizens having a lot of patience with us through this, this process because it is uncharted territories for all local governments. I ask that there are continued patience. That's really one of the keys to making it work is understanding it takes us a little longer to get some things done. But overall, we haven't had any complaints about the quality of service that folks have received.
Thank you. Anything further for the county manager? Okay. Next item on the agenda is public hearing. Item A, PB 19-17 Baxter Station is a planned development. As the county manager just said, we need to move those on, so I'm going to move that to, make a motion to move that to the May 4th Board of Commissioners meeting for our 6:00 PM meeting at that time. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. New business consideration, item A, consideration. New business consideration, item A, consideration of personnel policy revisions to sick leave and retiree health insurance.
Before we start on this, if I could, and I spoke to the county attorney today, I came up, before we vote on this, this is a matter that could possibly affect me. So I would request to recuse myself as being a sergeant or an employee at the Sheriff's Department as a deputy. With my time of service for the county, it could possibly fall where I could fall in one of these people. So I would, at that time, would not request to vote on that.
Okay. We have a motion to...
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Do I need to walk out of the room?
Yes, sir. I'll see you in a few. All right.
Do you have to come back?
I do have to come back.
Okay. Mr. Psychoule, please.
So I'll take the issue that Commissioner McCord has recused himself for. This is a policy about retiree health insurance. There was language in there that essentially if you left county employment and came back, no matter what the break-in time was, you were not going to be eligible for 100% insurance coverage. We asked the HR director, Sarah Tyson, to go take a look at all the employees that it could affect if we said if you were here, if you had a gap in coverage of a year or less, you would be grandfathered essentially into the insurance program where 100% would be covered. She went back, looked at all of the digital files as well as all the paper files, and she identified five employees that that would impact Commissioner McCord being one of them, which is why he's recused himself. Then also calculated the yearly extra expenditure for the county to offer that benefit would be $14,540. So that particular portion would extend this benefit to those retirees who had a gap in service of a year or less.
And how long do, or were county employees, retirees available to have this service? Until they're 65?
Until they're 65, whenever they can get on Medicare. And then, and actually, we, you all, the board ended that policy in 2017. So after July 1, I think, 17, that's no longer a benefit that's available if you were hired after that date. And that's because of the local governments, this was a very common benefit that used to be offered. Local governments realized that there was a lot of liability to continue that, especially whenever you had employees who were retiring in their 50s and then they were staying on county insurance for an extended period of time.
Okay. I will take a second, Ben pointed this out to me today, I hadn't really realized it, but the first page of this, they have changed how some of our paperwork is going to, if you guys didn't notice that or if you don't. But going to include a little more information on the cover page before we go into each agenda item to give us a little bit better snapshot and for the general public. So I just wanted to point that out to anyone that may be watching now still, that you're going to see a little bit of a change, and hopefully it helps you understand a little bit more of the agenda item and where staff stands and that sort of thing as we move forward, so...
I like it.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the revision for retirees and the health benefit.
I second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We've got to go get Mr. McCord.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'll be right back.
Okay. He heard.
You were eavesdropping?
I didn't hear the vote, but I did hear.
Oh, okay. All right.
That's fine. I said, "In May."
All right.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. So item B, discussion to consider an exchange of property on Grandy...
Let me back up. We've got one more part of this that, that's why I brought Commissioner McCord back in. Doesn't have to do with the retiree health insurance. There's another section of the personnel policy we need to amend, and this is just to be in compliance with the federal act that came out, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, I think's the name of it. But it basically extends FMLA and emergency paid sick leave. We talked about it at the last commissioner meeting, but this is a formality.
Is that the 80 hours?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Any questions for the manager on that?
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to discussion, item B, discussion to consider an exchange of property on Grandy Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is property that the county has owned. It used to be the Grandy Convenience Site, I believe, and there's a sketch that should be in your agenda packages. And essentially what it is, there's property behind it. The traditional entrance for that property actually runs through the county property. This essentially would just swap land for land. If the board approves this, then we would actually have to come back to the board with a deed, I believe, but we didn't want to take that step without getting some approval from the board.
Actually, a county may exchange property as a method of disposing of surplus property, but it would require 10 days' advance notice and public hearing. So this is a thing really to get an idea whether the board would be supportive of what is proposed. The only concern that I would have, which I'd like to have an opportunity to check also with our insurance risk managers, because this used to be a solid waste disposal site, I would not want us to be in a situation where we make an exchange and the person come back to find out that maybe there's some contamination or hazardous waste or something that's leaked out onto the site, and then the county is, you know, on the hook, so... But otherwise, there really shouldn't be a problem with making this modification and change of property lines.
So do you need a motion from us at this time or just consent to move forward?
Just consent to move forward, and then we can, once again, this can't be heard because it requires a public hearing until...
Right, okay.
I would agree to move forward with it, let the county attorney move forward with the due process on that.
Same with me?
Yeah.
You okay with that, Commissioner Beaumont? Okay, we have...
All right, well, staff will move forward, and what we will do is we'll, the county attorney can reach out to the insurance company, and we'll also direct the person who owns the property behind, they will actually take on the cost of preparing a deed to transfer that. That will be at their cost, not at ours.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. Is there any comments or questions on the consent agenda this evening?
Move for approval.
I'll second it then.
Who are we giving that to?
Just say Etheridge.
All right. Jay Owen. All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. This time, I will join the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners and open a special meeting in the Ocean Sands Sewer and Water, Sands Water and Sewer District Board. Tongue-tied on that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Essentially, this is just a budget amendment similar to the other ones that were in the